That's going to be very bad on the... People are going to be getting off. You know?
Yeah, I see that.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome everyone to the Burlington Town Council meeting. If we could rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Here.
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 Thank you.
Okay, Audience of Citizens is next. Anyone wishes to speak now would be the time. Seeing no one, I will close that portion of the meeting. And we'll move on to our meeting agenda, which starts with our consent agenda. If there's something that we all... I know we all reviewed this, and we'll take a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda items that are in front of us tonight.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on these? Mostly, they're all, I think, donations, right? We...donations and a couple of transfers, so... We always like donations, so hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So moved. Okay, moving on to our meeting agenda. Jack, number one.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda for tonight, we have a presentation by Kristen Brown. She's from Waste Zero. She's here to discuss a convenient way of collecting recyclable shoes, clothing, accessories. A lot of this ends up in the landfill. We're looking at ways to try to reduce our cost of our disposals for solid waste. Anything we can take out of the waste stream saves us between $65 and $70 a ton. So this is a way that we can remove materials from the waste stream and then go to beneficial use, so... I will say that Kristen's working with the city of Torrington right now, and she was there today, working with them on just another solid waste projects.
Okay. So thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Kristen Brown. I work for a company called Waste Zero, and I'm a consultant. I work through Waste Zero for primarily state government, sometimes county government, and every once in a while, a private company. And this particular project is a private company. And I will say, Simple Recycling, the curbside textile collection program, has been one of the most fun projects I've worked on because it is simple, like its name. It's very fun because it involves a hot pink bag, and it's free to municipalities and to residents. So it's been really one of the easiest things I've ever had to do. So I'll tell you a little bit about the background for Simple. Simple was started four years ago, 2014, by a guy named Adam Winfield. He's a young guy, young relatively speaking, 35-ish, and he was sort of on the fast track working for a Fortune 100 company, and he was one of those people that just quit his job and decided to follow a dream that he had, which was the idea of curbside collection of textiles. Textiles, in case you don't know what a textile is, textile is your clothing, your blankets, towels, leather goods, or, you know, purses, pocketbooks, shoes. All of these things are easily recycled, and they're considered to be textiles. So he started his program in 2014. He's grown really, really quickly. He has about 4 million homes today, different markets around the country. So he's in Austin and the surrounding area in Texas. He's in Lansing, Michigan area, Raleigh, North Carolina area. And he has a hub here in New Britain, and a second hub opening in Connecticut in Stamford. So the way that the Simple program works is, the idea back, I don't know, early 2000s, when we started curbside recycling of regular items, our recycling rate in the country skyrocketed because we made it easy for people because we picked it up at the curb. So his concept is to pick up textiles at the curb and follow the same recycling route. Now, he doesn't follow the trucks specifically, but if you're on a Tuesday collection route for recycling, you'll be on a Tuesday collection route for Simple, for the textile collection. His marketing is really, really, I think, ingenious, and I've been in this industry for over 30 years. And again, it's...I think it's successful because it is really unique, and the marketing is great. So basically, he does an initial mailing to every household in town. The first mailing is just a postcard saying that something new is coming. Like most postcards, not everybody sees it, but some people, you know, see that it's coming. The second mailing he does is this, which you guys have one, and we can pass some to the audience. But it's basically a clear plastic pouch. Inside, you've got the hot pink bag, which your clothing goes in, and a little bit of information and the website link so you can find out what can go in the bag. But the Simple bag is pretty good sized. I guess our sample has two bags. So you basically just fill all of these items in, you put your bag out right next to your recycling container, and his trucks come by and pick it up. When he picks up your bag, he leaves you an extra bag. So he leaves you two bags, and he ties them to the cart. So he knows that you're going to be a good re-user and a textile donator, so he ties the second bag. If you leave two bags out, he actually ties three bags to your cart. And if you, for instance, are moving or something like that, your kids are going away to college or you're downsizing your house, whatever, you can go online and just request 12 bags or 15 bags, and he'll drop them off at your house on the next route through. So he makes it as easy as possible to recycle as much used material as possible. The material itself that's collected, so you have three different grades of material. The first grade level is basically pretty nice stuff that can be resold. So he sells that by the pound to thrift stores and to nonprofits like Goodwill or Salvation Army. So they buy the clothes by the pound to help fill up their own stores. The second level of material is stuff that might not be in style in the United States, but it's still wearable. So that material goes overseas, you know, by the container load to different countries where, you know, they're not so...they don't care about the style as much, so Africa or someplace like that. The third level of material is the stuff that really isn't usable, but it's still recyclable. So for instance, clothing that's ripped, or, you know, even old rags can be turned into carpet padding, or insulation, or stuffing. Shoes that are damaged, or the heels are broken off of the shoes, those can be ground down, and they're actually ground into material that could be used under flooring, it could be used under basketball courts. If you've ever been on the playgrounds where they have the squishy material, that is usually made of the ground-up rubber and leather goods. So there's really a use for almost everything that he gets in the bag. He has about a 2% to 3% residual which does go into the waste stream, so, you know, it's not a perfect system. Every once in a while, he'll get a bag of leaves or something from a resident that was confused, and they put their leaves in there. But for the most part, he gets good stuff, and it's actually recycled. The really good news about it for you is you save money for every ton of material that you divert from the waste-to-energy facility. You're saving $60 to $70 a ton. And he also pays $20 a ton for the material you get. So the net swing is, you know, $80 to $90. So it's well worth the little bit of effort. So, make sure that I covered everything. Yeah, so basically here, some of the communities that are doing it so far, New Britain is the first hub. They opened in October. So around New Britain, we have West Hartford, Bristol, East Hartford, Torrington, Harwinton, Rocky Hill, and then multiple other communities in the same position where you are, where we've just introduced it to them. So for the most part, across the country, as he moves into a region, generally every community that has curbside collection, you know, adopts the program just because it is free and you're getting paid for the material, and, you know, it's a service to the community.
So collections every other week when the recycling bin goes out?
Exactly, yeah. And if you happen to change to weekly collection, as West Hartford has done, he'll collect weekly. He follows your recycling route. That's really the trick, I think, to the marketing, is that you make it a habit for people, and they know they can put it out, you know, whenever the recycling comes. I think the other primary reason it's successful is every morning, it's really, really fun. When you drive to work in the morning, you see these pink bags on the road when it's recycling day, so then you remember, "Oh yeah, I need to do that at home." So I think it's kind of got this innate, you know, marketing that you just see every other week.
I just saw some on the road as I was driving through. I think it was Rocky Hill.
Yeah, so it's...yeah. And I think Rocky Hill started this week, so it could have been Rocky Hill, yeah.
And obviously, people, you know, who, you know, hearing your presentation before, so people want to donate their clothes, as they always do. I mean, that's obviously up to them, but I think we all find those clothes that we look at and say, "Oh my goodness, I can't donate this." So this would certainly be a good place for that. Shoes, like, I think we mentioned one shoe, or so beat up that they really wouldn't want to donate them.
Right. Exactly. Even if...yeah, so it can be in basically almost any condition, and it can go in this bag. It can't really be drenched with motor oil or something, but, you know, for the most part, he can get everything recycled.
And they...and that obviously comes out of our waste stream that we're...they're throwing it in the trash, in a trash bag, or...
Right, right.
Normally go, right?
Exactly. And that's what's interesting to me, is being in the waste field for almost 30 years, I've done a lot of waste audits where you actually go through people's garbage and you see what's left. And so, for instance, in East Hartford, in November, prior to them starting this program, we did a waste audit all day long, and we found, I mean, multiple bags of clothing that was washed and folded. And I think people had the good intention of bringing it somewhere, but they just, you know, kept forgetting, kept forgetting, and finally just threw it in the bin. And so, and I think that that happens to a lot of the clothes. So this makes it really, really easy. Yeah, any other questions?
Yeah, any other questions? So, to start, what do we need to do if we are interested?
So, yeah, there is a contract. There's a contract to be signed just because he does do all of the marketing. He is a sole source because we haven't found anyone else in the country yet that actually collects material. So it's really just reviewing the contract and deciding if you want to join. It takes about a month. Once you make a decision, you design your own insert with him to make sure that it reflects your community, and then you're ready to go. So it's a pretty simple process.
Okay.
And then I will mention just quickly, there's another program. I also consult for DEEP. I work on a program called SMART. Torrington is looking at adopting SMART. New London is looking at adopting SMART, and West Hartford as well. So there is an opportunity with DEEP. We have three more slots open for the 20 projects that we're working on this year. And if you all are interested in SMART, you can email me and let me know. And that's a free service from DEEP as well.
Okay.
Okay. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think, before you go, so, I mean, there's no motion or anything, but what do we think? We want to look at the contract and Mr. DeNocca look at it and...
Absolutely.
Back to...
Not very often do we get something that's green, so environmentally responsible and fiscally responsible. We're saving money and getting paid on top of it. I mean, it's a no-brainer.
Okay. So the consensus is, Kristen, we're interested, so if you can provide either to Mr. Healy, and we'll get it to our Corporation Council and just review all that and get the conversation going further.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. Number two. Revised number two.
Revised number two. At the high school, NFPA code requires that we're able to communicate throughout the buildings using radios for both police and fire. We...studies of the high school have shown that we've had a couple of spots that are deficient. So we've been working on getting someone, a contractor, who's going to be able to put some repeaters in for us so that we're going to be able to get radio covers for the entire school. At your April 3 meeting, you approved a bid for that work, but we need to transfer money from the general fund to cover the work to be done. The council's previously transferred $40,000 for catch base and cleaning, and also another $50,000 for contractual services. So that we now exceed $250,000. So we need to take this to a public hearing to make the transfer...excuse me, a town meeting, a town meeting, thank you, to make the transfer. So what we're requesting tonight is that you make a motion to move to a town meeting to appropriate $172,515 from the general fund to the radio system upgrade account.
Sure. I just have a question. So I'm curious, the Berlin PD repeaters don't hit inside the school?
Not all sections of school, no.
Really? Is there other parts of town they don't hit on?
It's...so far, all the other schools have been tested, and it's just the interior bottom floor of the high school, they are not able to act...they don't get good service. So we've been looking at that probably now for almost, I don't know, almost a year now, trying to determine what we need to do. We've come up with this as the corrective action.
Okay.
It's not just the police, it's the fire department, too.
Yeah, no, no, it's important. I just...you know, typically, they cover the whole town. Yeah, I guess maybe because it's the bottom floor, probably can't get through some of the building or something, right?
Lot of steel, not a lot of new steel there.
Yeah, I get it. Okay. All right, so...
I'll make a motion to set a town meeting for May 1, 2018, at 6:45 PM to appropriate $172,515 from the general fund balance to the radio system upgrade account in the general fund's schools department.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Are none of us in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Agenda item number three is a request to waive the bidding requirements for Leonard Engineering so they can prepare documents for the construction and installation of an emergency generator on the well field on Elton Road. The Department of Public Health requires that we have emergency generators in a place where we're going to have water treatment. Currently, we have two wells that are active there. We do not have a backup generator to supply us power in case of a power outage. Ray Germain is here to discuss the particulars.
Okay. Hello, Ray.
Good evening. Several years ago, about three years ago, the Department of Public Health mandated that all utilities require generators, and we don't have a generator, we've never had one, at the Elton Road well field. And Leonard Engineering, several years ago, actually did some evaluations for us and came up with some options. What we'd like to do is hire them because of their...it's pretty logical, they've done the work, they understand the situation, and they can come up with the final design, and hopefully implementation by the end of the year.
Okay. Okay, and obviously, I know you explained it, but we're always very cautious when we waive bidding, but they've already done a lot of the...
They've been one of our go-to firms, and basically, they provided us with detailed analysis originally, so we thought it was pretty good to go through it with them now.
And we're sure of their proposal is...
Yeah, we've...
Cost-wise, obviously, is...
A couple of us have already gone out to the Southington site to see one of their well fields, and we pretty much understand the way it's going to be set up. It has to be propane because we don't want any fuel oil in that particular area for any fuel oil leakage. So it's going to be a propane system with a generator.
And the cost, you know, I mean, the cost...
These are professional services, and one of our concerns is with this, is they've done a lot of the work already, so they have background information. If we...you know, we can bid this work out, but what happens is now, and I was a consultant for a while, then what happens, a new consultant comes, and they have to go back, and very rarely will they say, "I'll take the previous consultant's information, I have to generate my own." So many times when we do come to the council, we're requesting for professional services for that reason. We do make an attempt not to give all of the work to any one consultant. We make an effort to bring in different consultants for different projects to make sure that we are not becoming reliant on one price structure.
Okay.
And to give you an example of that, we did have Weston Sampson at one time there. We also had Wood and Curran, and so Leonard's been...hasn't done anything in the well field recently, but this is one of the projects that they're doing now, or could do for us.
Okay.
Excellent.
Take a motion?
Okay. I will move to waive the bidding requirements for Leonard Engineering to allow for the preparation of the design, bidding, and construction oversight for the construction of an emergency generator at the Elton Road well field treatment and pumping station, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Number four.
Okay, Ray, just stay there.
Okay.
And here we go. We're requesting a wave the bidding requirements for earth contractors to reconstruct the Savage Hill sewer pump station. There's a long history on this. We have a pump station on Savage Hill, which we can eliminate by running a line through a...right away through a person's lawn into a system that's on Pistol Creek. The person's lawn has several large maple trees that we don't want to damage. We've been working carefully with that person. At one point, we designed it such that we were going to do boring under the trees, not do excavation, but bore a pipe under the trees so that we didn't damage the root structures. We had an arborist come out and approve the plans and everything. We had appro...I think we had set aside, what, Ray, about $150,000?
Right, yeah, about $170,000, actually.
And our low bid came in, $254,000. So we went out again, got a second set of bids, went up to $334,000. So we said, "Well, you know, this is more money than we can invest at this point." We went back to a more traditional approach, maybe we would excavate and carefully around the trees and the root structure. We started to work with earth contractors who have excavation contracts with us for emergency situations, and we were able to come up, determine with them that there'd be an estimated price of about $75,000 for them to do traditional trenching, up a trench, put the pipe in, and lay it back down. We've talked with the homeowner, he's good with the change in the design. So we're requesting that you waive the bidding requirements, and you allow us to go with earth contractors to put the pipe in for us, and then we'll be able to eliminate that. And that includes the elimination of the pump station, the deconstruction, the demolition and removal, so...
What's our liability if something happens to these trees that we're trying to protect for the homeowners?
That's why we're being so careful.
We had two sets of arborists come in. The first set of arborists basically told us how to protect existing trees in terms of doing the work. Second arborist was an evaluation type of individual, which was a specialization, came from Greenwich, and basically, the trees are valued at almost $100,000. So replacement value is quite considerable. So they have to be very careful in terms of the work that's being done. That's one of the reasons we went with trenchless technology.
They're that old, they have a very extensive root structure. I mean, you have to...
Well, that was one of the other reasons. We had another arborist come in to explain specifically how we can do the work without trying to interrupt the trees, life of the trees. There are two special trees here.
We've actually been going back and forth, it was probably about a year, 18 months, trying to make sure. We've had the homeowner in discussing this. We're being very careful about doing...we actually had somebody estimate that, they said, "There are places in Greenwich where if they have a tree this size, they actually cut it down and bring one that size to put it back." I'm not sure how you do that.
Well, it's Greenwich, they have limited fines.
In Berlin, we're not going to do that. But we've talked with the homeowner. I think we're, you know, we are all comfortable with what we're doing. Earth is understanding, and there's a great confidence that we can do this without damaging the trees. We're not doing any of this without the homeowner's involvement and approval. So we've had several meetings with them, and we're to the point...I think he actually is favored of getting this done.
Right, he's very cooperative, and we also took out an additional easement with him, and we paid him off on the easement. But he's been cooperative in both projects.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Take a motion?
Okay. Move to waive the bidding requirements to convert the Savage Hill sewer pump station into a gravity flow system and award the work to earth contractors of Kensington, Connecticut, utilizing contract number 2107-29 for an amount not to exceed $82,500, as this is the best interest of the town.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Number five.
Agenda item number five is approval of facade and landscape grant for 1244 Farmington Avenue LLC. The building houses currently Box Bistro and Timeless Treasures. Chris Edge is here to discuss the particulars.
Thank you. Yes, 1244 Farmington Avenue is right across from the Shell Station. It is the anchor plaza. It's one of the properties that has actually gotten tired over the years. If you drive by it, it actually looks like three separate buildings that were built over time. This property owner essentially has come to the Economic Development Commission, is going to redo all four sides of the building, three of which will be doing through the facade grant that are visible from Farmington Avenue, putting a new handicap ramp, new windows, doors, as well as new signage. In addition, he's going to pave. The good thing about this is it's a property owner who's been in town for a number of years, decided to make this investment. Through the way the program is written, anything above $50,000, we have to go to the council. So essentially, the council is approving from 50 to 60. It was already approved at 50 by Economic Development and Planning and Zoning. In your packet, there is a quick before and after, and the after isn't exactly right, but at least gives you a better idea under one definitive color that it will have a very different look to it.
Looks like quite the improvement.
It is. This is a project that I have been working on most of the time. I've been on board for the fact that it can be a really nice property, and hopefully, with a little TLC and assistance from the town, we can make this work and be a nice property.
When will they begin work, Chris?
I think probably at this point, if it is approved by the council, we'll go through, get the agreement signed with him, and then hopefully soon after, they'll begin the work.
Question, Chris?
Yes.
We had a couple of different rounds of grants for the facade program?
Yes.
And it's been a while since you came before us. So I'm glad that, you know, people should know there's still money left.
Yes, yes, there is. This is actually...
How much there was...
Yeah, this is the...thank you for reminding me. This is the second set of monies we had received. So this, I think, is the second or third, so we probably have in the ballpark $375,000, $400,000 in the matching grant program, and have a couple of property owners we're speaking to. The biggest issue has been, one, getting quotes, and, two, of course, the weather. But we are talking to a couple of different folks.
Okay. Thank you. Just a question on the, you know, the back units at that location. In the past, I've been prone to flooding.
Yes.
Pretty severely, actually. I don't know if they've solved that problem, or if...I mean, before we go and put a lot of money into it, I know, you know, people that rented the back couple of units there, and, you know, the right rainstorm comes along and it floods pretty severely.
Yeah, one of the things they've been doing is some new doors in the rear there. I think that's the biggest issue, has been that the seals on the doors have not been very good. So that's one of the things we'd worked with him on.
We met with them, Mark, Jim Horrible, and Chris and myself, to discuss the flood issues there and in the flood plain. There are certain requirements for them because of their location, and we have to monitor the amount that they spend because if they spend certain monies, it triggers different investments that they have to make in the building for those purposes.
Okay.
Chris?
Yes.
So I saw here that it says side, three sides of vinyl siding. Which side is not going to be...
The rear side, the side that faces away from Farmington Avenue. Okay. So essentially, yeah, because it's...it didn't make a lot of sense to do two sides because you're coming up from the Mill Street side, it'd be very silly, so it was sides that are eligible under the program, the three you can see. His intention is to do the back. He's not planning on doing three sides, it's just that's what is eligible under the program.
Okay. Okay. Take a motion on this?
Okay, I move that the town council approve a grant of $60,000 to the 1244 Farmington Avenue LLC for the proposed facade and landscape grant program project at 1244 Farmington Avenue, based on a grant of less than 50% of the projected project of $123,145.22.
Second on that? Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? for the proposed facade and landscape grant program, project at twelve forty-four Farmington Avenue, based on a grant of less than fifty percent of the projected project of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-two cents.
Second on that? Thank you. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Um, it's always good to see some improvements on Farmington Avenue. Thank you. Six.
Agenda item number six. Um, there's an update for, um, the golf sponsorships for the, the holes at Timberland. I believe, uh, in the past, you've approved, you reviewed and approved, um, certain fee schedule for sponsorship of the holes. There was a, I think it was the wrong price point. So we've gone back and reviewed the price point and, uh, Chris and John are here to discuss, uh, a change in the sponsorship.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, there was a couple of things. One was the price point, two was the golf rounds, and three was when we did it. We were looking at doing the sponsorship. A number of the people we'd spoken with had already had all their money spent for twenty eighteen. What we're gonna be doing at this point is we're gonna be lowering the number. There'll be no golf rounds involved. Uh, it'll be sponsoring the eighteen holes. Um, the good thing is it's gonna be nine hundred and fifty. It'll cover the cost of what we're doing. We're also hoping we may even get some local families that do it at this point. We're also looking potentially to do other things and we're talking to the Planning and Zoning Department. But right now, essentially, this will cover our costs. We'll be able to get the signs up and essentially do what we were looking for, not as much, but the feedback we've gotten, again, that this number makes more sense. And I think we'll still get the golfers without having to give away any rounds. And John's here. Will you have any particular questions?
Okay.
Hole near my house open?
Any other, any?
Is my hole open?
Whichever one you like. Just get it first come, first served.
I'll come talk to you. That's my hole.
Okay. Uh, any questions, other questions? Now we'll take a, uh, motion?
Okay, move to authorize Mark Bayram and the Golf Commission to offer eighteen single-hole sponsorships for the two thousand eighteen golf season at a cost of nine hundred and fifty dollars per hole.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Agenda item number seven, uh, is a Timberland golf cart lease, um, up for a public hearing. Uh, John has some information on how they want to change the, or a change in the, in the golf carts and, and the, and the prices that he has for those.
As, uh, Jack had alluded to, um, we had gone out with, uh, RFP, um, and received two responses to the RFP from Easy Go, uh, I'm sorry, Textron Corporation, which is Easy Go Golf Carts and New England Golf Cars, which is Yamaha, is the distributor of Yamaha Golf Carts. The bid was for seventy-five golf carts, one late model Easy Go Range Picker and one late, uh, one new two thousand eighteen current model electric, um, utility vehicle and one second utility vehicle. Yamaha came in at three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars less on the annual lease payment. Um, but if you take a look at the chart on the agenda item, the, the balloon payment or the balloon terms of the, at the end of the lease is with Easy Go is thirty thousand eight hundred dollars less. So that leaves Easy Go at a net less of fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars at lease term. So we're looking to, for the town manager to advertise, excuse me, for a public hearing, um, for the, uh, new lease of the golf carts.
Okay. Okay. Uh, take a motion?
Move to authorize the town manager to schedule and advertise at a public hearing on May first, two thousand eighteen concerning the following. Be it ordained by the town council, we hereby authorize execution of the contract to lease golf cart from Easy Go Textron of Og, is it Augusta, Georgia?
Augusta, Georgia.
Augusta, Georgia, in the amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars per year and a total for the five-year lease term not to exceed two hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second on that? You did. Okay, thanks. Um, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Agenda item number eight, um, is the, the blue, excuse me, the blue collar contract, uh, approval of the blue collar contract. Uh, the team of, uh, myself, the town manager, Denise Parsons, uh, Kevin Delaney, and Doug Solak, we reviewed the contract, um, went through it. There was, there was minor changes. Um, we just, we, we had a discussion and, uh, thought that would be best if we, we avoided lengthy negotiation process. Our, our legal fees this year have gotten to be for, for negotiation and, and labor contracts have been very high. Um, there was a discussion with, with the, with the union. Uh, we came to, um, a, an agreement. And so we're asking you tonight to approve the contract as laid out in, in your information. Denise Parsons is here to discuss the contract.
So Jack's pretty much laid out what the agenda item is. There's very few changes. We had conversations with, um, Doug Solak, who manages a large portion of our blue collar employees, but also with Jonathan Zook, um, with the Highway Department and with other managers who supervise blue collar staff to determine if there were any suggestions for changes within the contract. Um, we are very fortunate that we have a coalition for our medical insurance and for our retirement. So those big items that you typically negotiate with other unions, we don't have to do here in the town. Um, so the only thing we really looked at was some minor wordsmithing, um, mostly to make the contract mirror current practice. So we had some start and stop time adjustments where employees had actually started changing the hours to coincide with the needs for business, but the contract didn't reflect that. So we did some corrections there. Um, and those are really the only changes in terms of timing. Um, the only other ones that we added in, the long-term disability benefit. It's not a new benefit. It's a benefit that existed all along, but it was never actually identified within their contract and they wanted it put in. So we did realize that. Every town employee has a long-term disability benefit from the town, so this is not new language for them. And on their short-term disability, um, currently the short-term disability is thirteen weeks of pay at sixty-six and a sixth percent of your salary. But blue collar had a cap of three hundred dollars a week, which actually ended up to be about twenty percent of their salary. So over time, that number, that cap, never got adjusted. Uh, we've adjusted it to mirror the white collar, the nurses and the dispatchers union at six hundred a week cap. And those are the changes.
Okay, and I take it the, uh, the wage increase is, uh?
So the wages are two and a quarter for each year, which mirrors what we've done with the police, what we've done with the white collar, and, uh, what we'll be bringing to you when the dispatchers ratify theirs.
And that with our current environment in the state is what, right?
Unfortunately, we aren't seeing an impact on statewide settlements that are less than. This is within the statewide settlement range right now.
All right. Um, any other questions? Concerns? Hearing none. We'll take a motion?
Okay, I move to approve the contract between the Town of Berlin and the UE Local Two Twenty-Two, CL, C I L U, C I P U, C I L U number fifty-two, Blue Collar Employees, for the period of July first, two thousand eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, Denise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack, for, everyone for negotiating this.
Agenda item number nine is the award of bids for reconstruction of town roadways. It's that time of year again, we had to put, we put the paving list out and we're getting calls. We went to, we went to the state DAS, uh, Department of Administrative Services website. Um, this year, what we're asking is you approve, uh, two, two bids. One is Tilcon, one is Galasso. And we will work between the two to try to get the, with the work on getting the lowest price. One of the reasons for doing that is, as in the past, we've had difficulty sometimes, um, getting the contractor to, to schedule this because there's only one. Tilcon's got quite a large, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of demand. And so, um, Galasso was actually lower, so, uh, by, by a small amount in certain operations. So we're requesting that we, we give approval for Galasso and Tilcon for grinding, uh, milling and paving of the roads this year. Um, that way we, we have more flexibility and we can get to work on probably a little more efficiently.
Okay. Where's the other, where's the, uh, I see Tomaso on here. What's the other, uh?
Galasso there. If you go, they're seventeen, they're on the last page of your handout that should, or next to the last page of your handout.
Galasso there?
Yeah.
All right. Um, motion on this?
Okay, move to approve utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS services contracts, number sixteen PSX zero two zero six and number seventeen PSX zero two three eight for the two thousand eighteen construction season for the purpose of reconstructing and paving roadways.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number ten, uh, each year, we have a small cities, uh, grant that, uh, in fair housing month. Um, we have to adopt the fair housing resolution, uh, and the fair housing policy statement. Uh, and so annually, we have to, uh, we have, you have to approve those, re-adopt those. So we're requesting that you re-adopt those policies for this year.
Thank you. Uh, second on this? Uh, motion, I'm sorry?
Sure. Move to re-adopt the fair housing resolution and the fair housing policy statement, affirmative action policy statement, and the compliance with Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four statement.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any, uh, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, agenda item number eleven is the, uh, appointing the nurse case manager.
Oh, we had to do the appointments first, right? Full appointments.
First.
I carried away.
Yeah.
Trying to hurry us along. There's nothing wrong with that. That's okay. Um, just, hey, I just have one question. I know it's not in our packet, but, you know, there was some discussion of, uh, somebody we appointed to the, I meant to ask you this before, but what is it? The inland wet, it was inland wetlands, right, John? Zerotny? We, we appointed him, correct? Okay. Uh, did, did we not, did we not notify him or?
He didn't got a letter.
Okay, all right.
Doesn't appear to be there.
I, I, no, I had some questions. Uh, some people were asking me if he got appointed. I said, yeah, it was back in March, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, uh, maybe, uh.
We can reach out to him.
Do you have a, can you just reach out to him?
I have his phone number.
Was his phone number on that? Uh?
I know, John.
Oh, can you?
Want me to give him a call?
Yeah, I don't, just a couple of people, when I recalled, we had appointed him, so.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, if you would just call him here and thank you. Just make sure he got the word. Um. Okay, um, I think the first one on the list, right, is the Golf Commission? All right, we have two, two people. I, um, did my best to let them decide, but that doesn't always work, I guess. So I had talked to both of them and I last spoke to, um, Mr. Root, the president, and, uh, based upon the discussion with him, I'd like to make a nomination or if we could have a nomination for Mr. Root.
Okay, I will nominate Mr. Jeffrey Root for the Golf Commission.
Thank you. Um, any further nominations? Hearing none. We'll close it and, uh, go and take a vote on Mr. Root. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. And then the next one is Historic, right?
Sure.
You have one?
This for, um, Historic, District Commission Alternate, I will nominate, uh, Herbert Watson.
Thank you. Um, any other nominations? Hearing none. Close the nominations and we'll take a vote on Mr. Watson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, I, I just, one last time, I apologize. Some of this is on me. I know we had a different name. Now that came in for planning and zoning, I have another gentleman that I think I put in for both, right, Kate?
Yeah, he put in for ZBA and planning and zoning, and I think that's what happened.
Okay.
He wasn't appointed ZBA, so kind of moved his application to the side.
All right.
And he is interested in PNC.
Uh, that's, uh, oh, see, he, he, he wants ZBA now?
He has always asked for it. It's just that I.
No.
I don't think that, I'm not sure what happened here. I can't tell you.
Okay.
He would have gotten the applications initially in January, February, but then when he wasn't appointed to ZBA.
Okay.
He probably didn't keep him in the list because not thinking, not realizing that he wanted to.
Okay. Um, yeah, I know he's been waiting a while, so, um, is that, that's our only opening on ZBA?
The only opening on planning and zoning.
And I know there's another on planning and zoning, but I, that gentleman just came in, right, Michael? Is that a new one for planning and zoning?
He's been coming, he's been.
Michael has?
Yeah.
Oh, I have.
In the past several packets.
All right, look, uh, all right, if we could just.
We've pushed Steve quite a number of times.
Yeah, I think you should nom, yeah, that was my, that was my.
Looks like it was in a month earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
That was going to be my next thought was that we'll take a nomination for ZBA of.
Is it ZBA or Planning and Zoning Commission Alternate?
What's that now?
Planning and Zoning Commission Alternate.
For who?
There's no openings for ZBA.
ZBA.
Oh, there isn't. Oh, 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 he'd be an alternat, is, how many alternates are there? Are there two? One, two?
I think there's three, I.
It's Water Commission too, but I don't have any more.
Let me see, let me see here. Oh, ZBA has no openings.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so there's only one, uh.
Okay, I'll make a nomination for Stephen Bayella Junior for the Planning and Zoning Commission Alternate.
All right. Thank you for that nomination. Any further nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That's it, right? That's it? Town manager's report?
Town manager's report, um, just give you an update on, on, um, some dam work that we're doing on the Kensington Dam. Um, we've been meeting with, um, we've been meeting with our consultant, uh, the design of the, of the reclamation of the dam is complete, including the fish ladder. And then we just found out that we also have now an eel ladder. Um, so now we have a, we have two different species that we're going to be providing, uh, access into the, over the dam for those. The estimate, based on some changes in, in design, um, and, and process, we've budgeted one point five million dollars, you know, next year's budget. I think you're aware of that. We're looking at right now an estimate maybe one point three to one point four. So we, we're looking right now, we may be under our original, even despite the additional work for the eel ladder. We also had a telephone conversation, and I think Chris is still here. Um, we had a conversation with the, with a, a group from Long Island Sound about potentially getting a grant from them. Chris, was it about two hundred fifty thousand dollars? If you could come up and just quickly, uh.
Yes, there's a Long Island Sound Fund through, um, like a wildlife foundation, uh, up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, Jim Mahoney's currently looking at our eligibility. But if anything, it would be for the fish ladder, up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So, we're, we're continuing with that. And, and the reason we can, we're eligible, it's not like they would do it just for the dam. The reason that they would look at doing it is because of the fish ladder and the eel ladder. It's just part of, so they would partially or almost fully fund those two additions to the, uh, to the project. So right now, we're looking, that we're doing pretty well on that. Um, we're still looking for additional grant funds. Our, our consultant came back and, and he had some recommendations. We're not sure if we're gonna be eligible, but we're constantly looking for different ways of, of funding, uh, of funding the, the other parts of the dam project. Thanks, Chris. The road, the road schedule is on the website. Um, we were getting calls on that in springtime. So we did put the road schedule for paving on the website. So that, you know, we are kind, presently making some, uh, some, some plans on getting roads started in May, uh, doing some, uh, work. You may, I, I actually see some catch bases and things already being changed. So we're starting preliminary work on, on doing that. We also are looking at getting a possible grant, uh, for paving, um, oh, Kensington, like part of Kensington Road, Burnham Street, um, Demming Road and Christian Lane. So we're looking at possibly getting some grant money for doing that, uh, because of their status with, with, as far as being a, an artery. So we're looking at, we're looking at possibly, which would be good because it's hard for us to do those, those streets with, with using town funds because of the amount of traffic we get. So that would be a completely, we bid that project out and let somebody else handle that for us, for us. I think the, the one thing I want to talk about some is, is, is the rain. Uh, we had, we had, as I think everybody's aware of, quite a bit of rain yesterday. With that, there, there was some, um, some minor, I don't think there was any real major flooding, but there was, uh, considerable minor flooding. We had several roads that were closed at one time or another. One of the things that we did learn based on yesterday's rain is that we do have, our, uh, like a lot of things, our infrastructure for stormwater is aging. And we are going to be camering several pipes, um, to go and, and look to see whether or not we have, uh, root infiltration or some damaged pipes, pipes that are failing. And, and one is on one twenty-five Meadow, Meadow Lane, uh, they're completely over the road there. We had a few other places that we're completely over the road and we're going to go investigate those. Depending on what we find out with the camera, the pipes, we actually may go in, either route the pipes out or replace them, remove some trees and replace pipes. But we did find, uh, several places that we, we need to go back and, and, and do some work because of the amount of water we had. I mean, it was an unusual amount of rain. At one point, I think we were getting rates of almost three inches an hour, so it was a lot of rain. But, uh, we were out, we actually met with several residents yesterday and, uh, for the most part, they were in pretty good mood, other than, you know, with having water run down their backyard. Uh, but no, nothing, um, it was, it was too, too major as far as damage. So we did meet with several people about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, special committee reports, uh, had any, right? We got, I know we gotta do a, uh, an ordinance committee?
Yeah.
At some point?
Well, I would, I would propose that we would, um, we would do it. Well, I would propose that we would do it... We were going to do it before one of our meetings in April. I would say, if everyone's available, do it either the first of May or the fifteenth of May, whichever is good for the council.
All right, let's just pick the fifteenth. That's our second meeting in May?
Yeah.
Fifteenth? I don't know if people are... Who's on it?
Come early, like six...
Six o'clock, we're proposing, yeah.
Joanne, you're on it? All right? I forget who's on it, we only met, I think I met one so far.
I'll be there.
You're there?
I'm there, I'm good.
I think Peter, bless you.
Peter was on it.
Peter's on it, he should be... So, he'll be better.
We can send a survey out to each one of you and see if your schedules...
All right, let's do that. I just make sure Peter's better by then, hopefully he will be. Now, we can... Good enough. Okay, so that's special committee reports, council communications. Moving on to that. Any council communications?
Jack, I just have a quick one for you. I got approached by a Boy Scout that's going to do an Eagle project on the Shear property, that vacant building that's kind of a shelter or hut.
Yeah.
I just want to talk to you, or maybe Doug, if there's anything special colors or anything like that for this kid, or he's looking for some help and some expertise over there.
Okay.
Do it this summer.
Okay, we'll talk to Doug, or maybe to Woody, Steve Wood.
Okay.
He would be the other one to make talk.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Nothing? Okay?
I do have one thing.
Yes.
I just want to put it out there that we've had a number of executive sessions lately, and with executive sessions, we are supposed to keep that confidential, am I correct?
Correct.
And I feel that confidentiality has been broken, reading something about an executive session today in the paper, and there's been a quote previously. So, I just would like to remind our fellow council members and the mayor that executive sessions should be confidential.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that ends council communications. We'll move on to the acceptance of minutes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from April third, two thousand eighteen, a regular meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And...
Okay, I'll make...
I have a quick correction on the minutes from...
Fourth?
The fourth.
Okay.
On page six, third paragraph down, I think that was Counselor Gianoni, just, I've never patrolled the Litchfield Hills.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's all.
Okay. Okay, take a motion on that?
I will make a motion to accept the April fourth, two thousand eighteen special meeting minutes. That's corrected and amended. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Sure.
All right. Now, we will move into an executive session. We have two this evening, so... And then we will... After this first executive session, we'll come out and make a decision, and then we'll go back into a second executive session, and we'll come out of that one with a agenda item. So, we'll let you guys clear out, and we'll have a motion to move into executive session.
Okay, motion to move into executive session for personnel matters.
Just to recap, ad nauseam, I'm sorry, but just to recap it all, we've... It's been about fourteen months, we've had an acting temporarily, we've gone through several different titles to try and... Obviously, we wanted to keep the same continuance here going with Mr. Healy, who stepped in a position that he was asked to do it, and he, you know, stepped up to the job and, you know, probably beyond what everybody expected, so we did a great job. So, we've been through many interviews with several different candidates, and it's come down to one, come down to Mr. Healy. And I, for one, think he would be an outstanding candidate as a permanent town manager. So, I think we should go forward tonight and take a vote and see where we stand before that, if he...
Okay.
Let's take the motion, then we could discuss it further.
I will make a motion. Move that the town council appoint Mr. Jack Healy as the town manager contingent upon the negotiation and execution of an employment agreement by no later than May first, two thousand eighteen. Next town council... Is that enough time? Do you want more time than that?
Well, let's see...
Depends on how much negotiating there is.
Okay.
All right. We'll go ahead and stick with that date.
Okay.
We do want to move it forward as quick as possible.
Second.
Thank you. For discussion, just a couple things in our discussion, just so everybody's... I just wanted to read a few things about Mr. Healy's background before we take a vote, so it's on the record. He's been with the Town of Berlin since two thousand fifteen. Obviously, he was hired as a Public Works Director. He had been... He had previously been the Public Works Director in Litchfield. He was... He came before that, he was with the private sector in several different positions with Schlagel Electronics, Ingersoll Rand, as a manager of multiple sites. Managed their environmental health and safety programs for various sites for Ingersoll Rand. He was a senior engineer, environmental resource management, also auditing and responsible for the health and safety audit program of a multinational automotive supplier. He's with the Torrington Company. He's a professor, adjunct professor at Nogatuck Community College. He has an MBA, he has an engineering degree. His list of professional and volunteer activities are, you know, almost, well, too numerous to speak, but I will mention just some of them. He's been on just about every committee in Litchfield, Wetlands, Capital Committee, Bridge Committee, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Board of Education, and, you know, obviously volunteers with the Lions Club, volunteer with the Fire Department, has mat training, it just... It goes on and on, so just with his public experience as a Public Works Director, both in Litchfield and in Berlin, and with the last fourteen months on-the-job training, and his background in education, I think he's an excellent candidate. Just also for the record, just I asked him for our meeting to put together some accomplishments so the council would have that information as well. And the interesting thing about Mr. Healy is, he didn't want to do it because he felt that it was a team effort with the town and himself, but, you know, that's the type of person that he is. A real leader includes members of his team, and it's a team effort in town, and that's what we're looking for in the Town of Berlin to get things done. Just a few highlights, hired new administrative assistant for the town, he reorganized the grounds department under his direction. We all know, we've heard enough about it in our budget plan, we developed a ten-year capital plan looking forward at each department's needs. We upgraded our internal nine-one-one system. He held a management seminar for the forum at the library for the town staff, security forum, which we were at at BOE, security plans. He's the Visiting Nurse Association, he's managed the hiring of our new VNA administrator, hired a new tax collector, hired a new town planner. We organized the planning and building departments. We noted that in that particular issue, planning and zoning, near and dear to my heart, we have been... Our new town planner does not supervise our building inspector, that's not done that way in most towns, so that was a big reorganization there that frees up our town manager to do... I'm sorry, our town planner to do a little bit more with his job and knowing that the building inspector, you know, really works under state... Under state regulations, so he reports directly to the town manager. He's negotiated contracts, our white collar contract, police contract, police dispatch contract, blue collar contract, our golf course. One of the things I heard about our golf course when I became the mayor is that was ignored, and that was from people that worked at the golf course. So, one of the things we talked about when he became acting was to go out to the golf course and see if we could make it a moneymaker. We know it was losing some money, things were not, from what I heard, and I'm not a golfer, so I could only take it from what the residents and the golfers told me, that things were not getting done out there. Some of the maintenance things were not done, so he took that project, and we have made some significant changes out there, and they are still continuing, obviously, with the addition of our Golf Commission as well. Business continuity plan, we've developed a new plan, he's working on our website, Facebook page, just some of the... They go on and on, Public Works, obviously, there was Farmington Avenue Bridge, so remember, as the acting town manager, he was also our Public Works Director. And there was many, many projects that we are going through, the high school tennis courts we redid, the Naresco Energy Project was finishing up under his tutelage, repair of four bridges, the railroad dam project, we're working on that now, water control. You know, we know our water control issue in town, we have three different water departments, we're looking at that now as an issue. So, these are all things that he is trying to lead the town forward. So, this is the person that I think we need to move us forward and to continue to move us forward, and of course, keep... I think what's very important is the continuity in our town manager's office, too. I think that's very, very important that we continue with that. Yes, sir?
Mr. Jack Healy, in my opinion, is tried and true. He's undergone a fourteen-month working test period, and in the fourteen months, he's demonstrated that he's pragmatic, accomplished, professional, and, in my opinion, a true leader. The town would be, in my opinion, extremely fortunate to have him, and I'm thoroughly impressed with him, and he has my vote.
What else?
You know, I just, as I've said a number of times, you look great on paper. Your resume is very, very impressive, but that we've had this time to actually see that, you know, you're even more than that in, you know, in actual real life, not on paper. The things that you've been doing for this town, even as interim, I mean, knowing you were interim and still putting your heart and soul into things that you did, I mean, we would be lucky as employers to have you, because of the passion that you put into your work. So, thank you for everything that you've done up until now, and you have my vote as well.
Jack, I just want to say, you know, it was a long process, you handled yourself as a gentleman. I've heard that from town employees, some of our residents that work on our commissions. They felt you were very approachable, and, you know, that to me is important, that the people in this town hall appreciate you, and they want to continue to work with you. So, you have my support, too. Thank you.
Ladies. Comments? Roll call vote. Comments, okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, and obviously, like we said, this will be subject to our contract negotiations, so we'll take a vote, we'll do a roll call vote.